Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and start this. Sebastian City Councilmember, I'll call you to order. You all rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, which tonight will be led by Councilmember McPartlin. Thank you.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Avino.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, council, at this time, it's time for agenda modifications. I'll ask that we pull item 12C after discussion with the city manager. He has asked that we remove that item from the agenda this evening. That's 12C. Very good. All right, thank you. Are there any other modifications? At this time, I have proclamations, awards, and brief announcements. I have a proclamation for our Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week. I am fantastic. Turn around. Today, I have a proclamation for Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week, June 3 through 7, 2019, whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, well-trained, and highly responsible individuals who take their job seriously and are proud of their department and the city which they serve. And whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens in this community through the application of the building zoning, housing, animal control, fire safety, environmental codes, and ordinances. And whereas every day, assisted by support staff, they attempt to provide quality customer service for the betterment of the community. And whereas the Florida Association of Code Enforcement has declared the first week of June to be set aside by local governments to honor and recognize their code enforcement officers and support staff. Now, therefore, I, Jim Hill, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Sebastian, do hereby call upon all residents to observe the week of June 3 through 7, 2019, as Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week, and encourage citizens to join city council in expressing our appreciation for their dedication and outstanding service.
However, I just appreciate everyone with the city of Sebastian and all that they do for us. It's not an easy job, but, you know, we do it with great pride.
And on behalf of code enforcement for the city of Sebastian, we accept this acknowledgement and thank you very much. I want to thank the council members, all the city employees, and the police department for their help and support. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. That's got to be one of the most difficult jobs because you only want to see code enforcement when they're not coming to your place, for sure. But they do a heck of a job for the city of Sebastian, and we're very proud of them. I have a certificate of appreciation for Mr. Sonny Cabot. It doesn't appear as though he's here tonight, but he has served on our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, so we have a certificate for him, and we'll make sure he gets that in the mail.
We have two brief announcements. Tonight, city hall will be closed on Monday, Memorial Day, and also the Memorial Day observance in Riverview Park will begin at 11:00 a.m. Hope to see you all there.
All right, thank you. Are there any other announcements from council members? All right, great. Then it will move us to the consent agenda, council. I would ask that we remove item B from the consent agenda for discussion. Anything else on the consent agenda? Look for a motion.
Move approval of item A, C, D, and E. Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Avino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Council, we have the upcoming Florida League of Cities convention, and we also have some meetings that we have to make sure we get -- that take place with HUD in order to qualify for the grants that we're seeking. And so I pulled this, and I guess I'll just let Ms. Williams go ahead and describe what the situation is.
So we do need to have an August 14 city council meeting, and the Florida League of Cities has the research symposium that morning, Wednesday morning, at 8:30, and they think it's going to be on homelessness. So I'm asking if you would like to -- do you want to go to that symposium, or do you want to move the council meeting to Tuesday and then travel?
All right, very good. So what, council, what I'm thinking is that the research symposium that's going to be taking place Wednesday morning at the League of Cities is on homelessness. We have a growing problem with homelessness in Sebastian and Indian River County, and I think it's something that we need to really, really focus on getting a hold of. So I think it's important that as many of us can be there as possible. But we also have this meeting that we have to make sure we take care of for HUD. I would recommend that we go ahead and move that meeting on the 14th to the 13th, have that sometime during the day, whatever's convenient for everyone. And then that would allow us the opportunity to go down and be present at the symposium.
Mr. Mayor, we will need a time because we'll have to re-advertise that meeting.
I understand. So from a standpoint of council members, I guess I'll clock this to council members at this time. What is a good time? Obviously, this is in Orlando, so it's not that far of a trek to get to. My thoughts would be early afternoon. Maybe we can go ahead and have that meeting at like 3:30 or something like that, and that way we can get staff, get the meeting taken care of, and then get up there to the symposium.
That sounds fine. I serve on the Treasure Coast Homeless Services Council, so I think that would be beneficial.
Absolutely. Does 3:30 sound okay on that date?
3:30 is fine with me. Yeah, I'll be out of work by then.
I'll defer to the two people that work here. Or the three people, if you'd say.
So if we could reschedule that meeting to August the 13th? Three -- yes, sir. I'm sorry. Correct me if I'm wrong. Isn't it in our charter we can't have meetings before 5:00?
I'm sorry.
Just special meetings?
This would be a special meeting for the HUD.
I'm trying to pull it up, but go ahead. If you'll be more familiar.
Regular meetings are not before 5:00, but special meetings we can have at any time because then we hold a special meeting -- Mr. Carlisle. It would be a special meeting specifically for the HUD.
Right. But we need to also make sure that we get the regular business meeting taken care of at that time as well, if there's anything that needs to be handled from a business standpoint. So whatever would normally be on the regular 14th meeting, we need to make sure it's on that agenda, so.
I think that gets us in a little bit of jeopardy with what the mayor -- with what the attorney was talking about, the special meeting would be the HUD meeting, and you would cancel the meeting on the 14th.
5 o'clock is not a problem for me. I don't know if that works for everyone else. Well, let's just go ahead and do it at 5:00 so that we don't have any conflicts there. All right, so council, I'll move to move the council meetings regularly scheduled for the 14th of August to the 13th at 5:00 p.m.
Can you just say 5:01? That way it's after 5:00. I know it's a technicality, but it is.
5:01 p.m.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's a motion.
Second.
Second.
All right. And any more discussion? Anyone from the public wish to discuss this item? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you very much. And then we'll all get with Ms. Williams to discuss our accommodations in Orlando over the next week. Does that sound fair?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion. We approve item B, though, on the consent agenda.
I second that motion.
Is that necessary? There's not really a --
We didn't actually approve item B. We just set the meeting date.
So motion to second. Any more discussion? Anything from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Councilor, any committee reports or appointments this evening? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, last week at the Treasure Coast Regional Planting Council, the council voted unanimously to ask that the -- that the Treasure Coast Regional Planting Council staff send a letter to the governor asking that he veto House Bill 7103. 7103, if you don't understand or haven't read, has several anti-home rule provisions within it. The most important, and the one that the Treasure Coast Regional Council picked up on, it was the provision that forces the loser in any lawsuits that might be filed against a higher entity to pay the legal fees. The issue there is that if a city, for example, has to sue a county, and the county legal fees are paid for by the taxpayers, but under this resolution, the city will have to reimburse the county taxpayers, which is basically partly themselves, for those legal fees. And they felt kind of strongly that that was -- that that bill needed to be vetoed. So I asked the city attorney to pass out a copy of the letter that the Treasure Coast Regional Planting Council sent to the governor, and I'd like to recommend that we produce a similar letter to that under the -- from the city of Sebastian.
Yeah, I would agree. That makes total sense. We can just wrap the letter from the city of Sebastian, and then we could also potentially do a resolution in opposition to the bill.
Yeah, we could do it. At the next meeting, we could do a resolution. But it hasn't actually been sent to the governor yet.
Right.
I asked the city attorney to check on it, and that bill is one of the ones that has not been sent to the governor for his signature, so it -- but the letter should be sent relatively quick if we can do the letter tonight or have him do the letter tonight.
Sure.
Okay.
Any opposition to that? All right, thank you.
No objections.
Great. Is there anything else on --
Thank you.
-- committee reports? Thank you, sir. Tonight, we have no public hearings. We have no unfinished business. At this time, I'll ask anyone from the public who wishes to come before this council to discuss any items in the city that are not currently on the agenda, you're welcome to come forward at this time. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Officer Councilmember Rivers. My name is Carlisle, and I'm representing Indian River shores, and I would like to thank the council and Chief Rozell and the city of Sebastian for approving on the agenda our first annual fire truck pull for Special Olympics fundraiser. It's going to be June 8. And we have a lot of notices around here in the chamber, and I just wanted to personally thank you, and I hope that the community would please come out and join us on June 8. It is a morning event, and it's our first annual. It's a fundraiser for the Special Olympics Florida chapter, and it's a great family environment, public in the park, so from 9:00 to 4:00, if you'd like to join us, please do so for our first annual event. Thank you.
Could you describe what's going to take place at the event?
Yep. So if anybody knows, the Flame of Hope is where law enforcement and Special Olympics together run for the opening ceremony for Special Olympics. So it's very near and dear to Chief Rozell, and so he is -- I am the volunteer to help coordinate this first annual, so forgive me as I make my way through this first one. But so what it is, is it's just a fundraiser to help support our Florida chapter. We'll have 20 of those athletes there to come and be with us, and it's just fun. We're going to pull against an actual 65,000-pound fire truck. It sounds a little bit more daunting than it is, but five-man crews of first responders, law enforcement, and eight-man crews of any civilians or community of churches. High schools are coming, and it's just a great day in the park. We're going to have vendors from the Sebastian area. We've invited the chamber members and businesses to come out, and it's still time to join us if you'd like to. All 100% money is raised will be donated to the organization as it is a not-for-profit organization, and some games and some fun and some live music and food trucks in the park.
Sounds great. What was that date again?
It's going to be June 8. It's two weeks -- excuse me, three weeks away on a Saturday in the morning from 9:00 to 4:00, and we'd love to have the community with us. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Anyone else in the public wish to speak at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Diana Bolton, and I live at -- next to the Stormwater Park on George Street. I'm an environmental marine science researcher, and I'm here to talk about banning glyphosate and banning spraying pesticides in our water bodies. I spoke to the city council on March the 13th and again on April the 10th, and I've also done some speaking with some of the other organizations in town, and we have recently been asked by another vice mayor of another town to please come and speak at their city council meetings because they want to do the right thing. I've also met with Commissioner Dodd and Commissioner -- I mean Councilman Dodd and Councilman Kinschen, who I really appreciate your time and attention, and I know that you're very concerned about this issue. I've tried to get appointments with Mr. Avino and Councilmember Avino and also Councilmember Bob McPartlin, and I've been unsuccessful so far. So I want you to know that this is a -- there's a sense of urgency about this. These pesticides are causing cancer. In fact, one of the people that we're going to speak tonight, she couldn't make it. She texted me, and she said she's so sick she can't get out of bed from the chemo from her non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. So we don't need to let another day go by that we're poisoning our wildlife and our water bodies and our citizens. So it's important that we do have an immediate moratorium on any glyphosate products. There's 11,000 lawsuits right now and more coming. Since I last spoke before the commission, there's another $2 billion lawsuit. There's just been one. Lloyds of London refuses to insure anything that's glyphosate related, and as you know or familiar with Lloyds of London, they'll pretty much insure anything. So they have now dropped any glyphosate use or any kind of insurance to do with glyphosate. So you may want to look at your insurance policy. We don't want to be spending our tax dollars on that. I would request an immediate moratorium on spraying. I know that Vice Mayor Linda Kinschen did ask for that at one of the meetings when I presented, and I want you guys to please reconsider that. And I would also request that we consider amending our fertilizer ordinance to include pesticides to mirror the same setbacks that the fertilizers have, so that there's a setback from when we're applying those chemicals, that they not get into our water bodies. And I also have some good news. The city of Satellite Beach passed an ordinance and banned it last week, and as of last night, the city of Key West did also. So that's some good news. And how Key West did it in 60 days was they met with the mayor and they met with the city manager and also the city attorney. They collaborated. They worked together. They drew up the resolution and the -- whatever documents were necessary, they shared them. They looked over them together, and then they just passed it. It was very simple. There didn't have to be a circus. There's been talk about bringing Aaron Brockovich in. There's been talk about bullhorns and protesting, but really, let's just do the right thing. Let's move on this. Let's not waste any time. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Okay, I have one question for you. Pretty simple question. You want us to stop spraying Rondell? What's the alternative?
We've presented those to you. It's mainly --
No, ma'am, you have not presented anything to us that is a viable alternative. Nothing has been presented to us.
Graham Clotz presented --
Ma'am, when I'm speaking, I appreciate you not speaking over me, and I will afford you the same respect.
I was trying to answer your question. I'm sorry, ma'am.
Okay, I will afford you the same respect.
Okay.
We have not been presented with an alternative. In fact, there are no -- there are alternatives. I would suppose Dyquat, Ty Campbell would probably not be something that you would find favorable. It's not really effective, but I think it is labeled for use in spraying aquatic weeds. The question I have is, we have many canals, we have many waterways that are in place in the city of Sebastian that are there as flood control as well. Not only are they as flood control, they're also there as water treatment. So it is required of us to maintain those vegetation free. So I'm asking you right now, you're asking us to not maintain them. I'm asking what your alternative to that is, what alternative to us spraying it.
Certainly. I'm glad you asked that question. What I would do if I were in your position is I would immediately get on the phone to my contemporaries in some of these other communities that have not found it necessary to do that.
Ma'am, I don't need to listen to somebody. I'm sorry.
But that's the first thing that I would do, but what they are doing is manual, and they're doing non-poisonous methods. And as far as removing all vegetation, there is no law that says you have to remove all vegetation. In fact, there's biofilters, which we really need. Clams, oysters, seagrass, and we need the bulrushes, and we need the cattails, and many of us know and many of us are aware of the fact that those are biofilters.
Thank you. Your time is up this evening. Thank you very much.
Yeah. So manual, I would suggest manual.
Manual, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you. I said, Mr. Mayor. That's like six guys ago, isn't it? Mr. Carlisle.
Yes.
I have a question for you. Have we looked into the manual removal of vegetation in our waterways?
So I'm still working on it. I have gotten two quotes just to clear the vegetation on El Cam from the Concha Dam all the way up to the water park, just to clear the hollies and the pepper trees and the noxious vegetation, the cabbage palms. One quote was 1.1 million, one quote was a little over 500,000. That's just to do the initial clearing.
And that's on one waterway?
That's on the one waterway. That won't affect the annual maintenance. I met with a harvester that uses a mechanical harvesting machine. We don't have the water depth for them to run the mechanical harvester, so it would literally have to be hand-pulled.
Hand-pulled.
And so when I did show him the garden park off of Barber Street, he said, "I could get some of that cattail out of there, but it's going, three or four weeks, it's going to grow right back." He said, "It's going to be a combination." So, and speaking with our aquatic applicator to do manual, to put people out there, it's estimated at $2,000 a day, and I just used a 200-day rule, so about 400,000. But we don't know that that's a high number or low number. He doesn't know. Until we get the canals opened up where they're clean, then you'll have to -- then you'll come up with an idea of what it is.
So that's just the one waterway, though. Essentially, we're talking about the one waterway. The El Cam waterway is going to be in approximate is upwards of $400,000 a year to manually remove the vegetation out of that after spending over a million dollars to have it initially cleaned out.
Yes.
That's just an initial estimate.
Yeah.
And that's only one waterway. Does that include the Stormwater Park that we have in the city of Sebastian?
No, it didn't include the Stormwater.
Are there any other waterways that we would have to maintain as well?
So the waterways that ABC -- aquatic vegetation, applied aquatic sprays, it was our estimate that that's what it'd be, about 400,000. They don't spray all of our parks, but yeah, that was just the ones that --
Just the ones that they take. So 400,000 to do that. What are we currently -- what are contracted with them?
Our current budget for applied aquatics right now is 27,000.
27,000. So right now, we're doing it with a non-toxic chemical that's legal and proven safe and proven to be non-toxic scientifically.
The EPA just did a new analysis and said that it was a non-cancer-causing agent.
Thank you. So we have -- so right now, we're -- I just want to just make sure we're clear. So you're over a million dollars just in the initial, and then at least $400,000 a year to maintain something that we're currently doing, and we're using best management practices. We're only spraying what we need to, to make sure we keep these waterways clean at about $30,000 a year.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak tonight?
Can I make a -- say something?
Yeah, please do.
Okay. Where are you on -- before we jump to cause here, because what I just heard was an argument for not finishing your report, and I disagree with that completely.
No, I'm -- I didn't say that.
And what I'd like to see from you, and I'm hoping that the other council members would like to see that, is an option to clean those waterways that does not include the use of a glyphosate-based herbicide, just so we can see that. But I don't want to jump to cause. You know, I explained it to you before. What the engineers call that is you define the problem to fit the solution that you want. You don't define the problem before you come up with a solution. So I understand all these dollars you're talking about, but I don't -- I'm one person sitting up here who doesn't want to jump to cause on this. I would like to see a complete report. This has been asked for. I do not believe that we should knee-jerk a -- knee-jerk of resolution that we can discontinue the use of the chemical until we know what we're going to do.
Right.
So I would like to see that complete in that report.
So just so we're clear, I did not call for stopping that.
Okay.
What we were asked to do right now by the previous speaker was to have a moratorium this evening, and so I feel I'm compelled to let the public know that this is the information that this council has at this moment, and so a moratorium on the use based on what -- and I will say it, it's a hoax. So based on that, to -- so a moratorium, which would cost us a tremendous amount of money and potentially bankrupt us, would make no sense at this time until we receive the information from the city manager.
I agree with that 100%.
Which you're currently working on, correct? Can I, Mr. Mayor, may I just interject for a minute? So I've contacted Evanston, Illinois, that has -- I'm not going to give you all the fact checks I'm still putting together. Evanston, Illinois has stopped using glyphosate since 2010. I've reached out to them. They've given me the information they've done.
Okay.
City of Stewart, I've reached out to them. They've given me all the chemicals and the procedures they're using. I've reached out to several other communities to find out what they're doing in lieu of. I'm not ready to disseminate that yet because I haven't got it all put in a package where I can. So I'm not saying don't consider the banning or the not use of glyphosate. What I'm saying is, let me give you all the information.
And that's exactly what I -- that's my position on this, is we have to wait until you finish that report and you provide us all the information, because I can make a stack of papers that tall on one side and a stack of papers that tall on this side. This one says glyphosate will kill you. This one says it's safe. I'm not going to judge the scientific nature of that. This is no longer a scientific problem. It's a political problem, and we need to address it as such. Scientists cannot come to a conclusion. If you believe one side, you believe them. If you believe the other side, you believe them. They're not going to solve this problem. It's a political problem. So we have to address it correctly, I think. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to speak tonight? Yes, sir.
Normally, my name's Charles Stadleman. I'm coming to you tonight as a citizen of Sebastian, but I do sit on your natural resource board, and we have regular meetings held monthly. I would have just sat here quietly and listened to everybody, but I just want to give the council a feeling of what's going on out here. Some of you guys were at that meeting for the Sebastian Homeowners Association, and if you guys were there, you would have known it was a very ruckus meeting, and you're standing with somebody who's used to ruckus. I thoroughly agree with Councilman Dodd. It's a political issue. I grew up here in Sebastian. I've been here for a long time. My mother works in the fields. I've talked to many people who work around this stuff on a regular basis. It is a very political issue. I just wanted to remind the council that you do have a natural resource board who would be -- I'd have to bring it up to them again. I'm not the president of the board. Mrs. Mosblit is. But we would be glad to lend any assistance that we can and to help either form an opinion or develop a strategy on getting the plans out that doesn't require the city to go bankrupt as well as long-lasting and sustainable. But I can tell you, that meeting, that meeting was more than ruckus. It is hysteria out there about this stuff. I've monitored my blood pressure since high school. My blood pressure went from 125 over 90, which is a -- to 165 over 111. Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. I will, again, thank you, sir. I'll again remind the public that the city council has, in fact, directed our city council member to, I'm sorry, our city manager to go ahead and get us a report, let us know exactly what we're doing, give us any alternatives to what we're doing, to make sure that we're doing everything that we could possibly do that's in the best interest of this community, not only from a safety standpoint, but from a financial standpoint. That's our job. We have to make sure that we take care of and protect the citizens of this community. And we have taken action a month, more than a month ago, to start that process and it's already underway. So thank you for that. Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir.
Wait, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I can input a little bit.
Go ahead.
And I mentioned it at the last council meeting. You know, we've gotten emails about cancer rates being up in Sebastian River Middle School. Me and Mr. Carlisle contacted the Department of Health. I took part in the Indian River County Community Health Improvement Program several years ago. The rates are not up in cancer. Anytime somebody is identified with cancer in the community, their doctor has to let the Department of Health know so they can determine if there is a cancer cluster or if there's an irregularity. I also heard at a meeting that there was a cancer cluster in Okeechobee County. I sat on the Okeechobee Community Health Improvement Program and contacted their Department of Health person. There's no cancer cluster in Okeechobee. They're looking at that. I confirmed with my own doctor. If you are identified with cancer, they have to notify the health department to see if there is a cancer cluster. I don't ask anybody to believe me. Contact, do your own information. Don't listen to other people. Read out there and see what's available.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. It's amazing how, you know, when something like this, when, you know, you have, when clearly we're doing our best to make sure that we're doing everything right, there are some out in the community who are not. And their goal is to have a meeting like the one that was had by the property owners association. And their goal is to create hysteria. And their goal is to generate a buzz, to try to do things to take this community down or to harm this community when our goal is to help it. So thank you very much for that because lies do a lot to create hysteria. And we have to make sure that we deal with the truth and that we deal with, you know, facts and be calm about this and go forward and do what we can as best. Yes, sir. Mr. Gilliam.
I'd like to, if we can, direct Mr. Carlisle to work or take whatever assistance that you can from the natural resources board, if possible. I mean, if they're willing to help you out, I would say any help that you could get would be...
Well, I will just tell you this, and I'm just going to tell you, Mr. Carlisle's getting help from every single person in the world. And his job is very difficult right now to try to take the information he's getting and some of it's overlapping and there's a lot of stuff. And so he needs to just put together something in his office and utilize the folks that he finds that can best help him and assist him with getting that process taken care of and then bring us back a report. And then the five of us can sit up here and blubiate all night long and discuss what it is that we think we should do going forward. Mr. Herman?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
My name is Russell Herman. I reside at 586 Redwood Court. I am the first vice president of the Friends of St. Sebastian River. We are coming into our rainy season when more nitrates, such as nitrogen and phosphorus, as well as herbicides, pet waste, et cetera, are more likely to be washed from our lawns, driveways, and roads into the stormwater system and ultimately into the lagoon. The fertilizer ordinance is passed by Sebastian, going to effect on June 1st. It prohibits the use of lawn fertilizer between June 1st and September 30th. No. No fertilizer containing phosphorus is to be used at any time. All residents, all fertilizer must contain at least 50 percent slow-release nitrogen. Finally, no fertilizer is to be applied within 10 feet of any body of water. If you use a lawn care provider, please discuss these regulations with them and ask them not to blow grass clippings onto the road or into our storm ditches. This vegetation contains the nutrients from fertilizer that only add to the pollution of our waterways. Flyers are available in the back of the room with more information. Bumper stickers are available in the lobby. Please, please, talk about this with your neighbors and friends. Let's do our part to help the lagoon. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Joy Ring for Seven Queryling. I'm going to talk to you as a past chairperson of the natural resource board. And the reason why people are having such a difficulty is because they have been ignored for the three years I was on the board by the person who was our representative. He did not, and these people have been fighting for three years and have been ignored. We have gotten rid of that person. He is no longer a city employee. So I do employ the other people to, you know, be a little more patient. But Mr. Hill, you know exactly what's going on and you have not been in favor of anything working in the canal system. So I just thought I would let you know as past, may, not mayor, past chair. I was chair for a year. So, and yes, nothing got from the natural resource board back to council. I know that for a fact because I had to go through city manager every time I needed something done. Just thought I'd let you know. This is where people are coming from because they have been before the board and they have been ignored. Thank you.
Thank you. They're not being ignored now. So I appreciate you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Damien Gilliams, quick question. You have irrigation later on in the meeting. Would I be allowed to talk about the cemetery that's not related to irrigation later on or do I need to do that under public input?
Well, if you'd gotten here on time, you'd have noticed that we pulled that item off the agenda.
Oh.
So the irrigation is in this pool. Yes, it is.
Good move, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, you're welcome. You're welcome.
Let me go ahead and proceed with letting the community know. By the way, you know, when somebody calls you guys, you representatives of the community are supposed to return their calls. Mr. McPartlin, Mr. Avino.
Excuse me, sir.
I'm talking to you, sir.
Mr. Gilliam.
Go ahead. You're going to cut it to my time?
Yes, I am because you're breaking the rules. And so now I'm going to have to explain the rules of this to you one more time. You've been doing this for years, getting up here and doing your best to disrupt our meetings, to disrupt the business of this community. So you know the rules are that this seat, right here, this is the chair seat, whoever that's sitting in there is where you are to direct your comments.
Let me just cut to the chase.
You may continue.
Yes, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Let me cut to the chase. City of Sebastian bought 1.4 acres, 2013, under Mr. Minner. We talked about that. We didn't have enough money in the account to purchase it. We borrowed money from another account at the cemetery. They talked about, and I'll read Mr. Minner's words, "We borrowed money because we didn't have enough money to close the deal." We talked about sand, a lot of sand. And this is what it says in his memo. "With the existence of the Sugar Sand Ridge in the parcel, the city could consider removal and the sale of the sand. This would create more space for lot sales, and the sand sales could equal the value of the property." The value of the property was appraised at 375,000. Just so that, I'm going to cut this short because I got all the documentation. Just let the community know that we cleared the property. We cut a deal with a local developer. He got to keep the 375,000 dollars in sand in lieu of clearing the property. You did not follow your procedures under the procurement on what you're supposed to do with excess property. You're supposed to put that out to auction so other people can bid on it. And that was, now, if you push that from 2013 to 2019, you go to gravel.com, that fill's worth maybe 400 to 800,000 dollars. So, Mr. Mayor, when I sit down, maybe you can explain to everybody in the community why you went ahead and you knew about it because they found bodies on the property right here in town. Everybody knew about it. And we've been asking you to put this on the agenda. You're stonewalling us. We have not seen it on the agenda because we sent somebody up here from the Sebastian Property Owners Association, not the Sebastian homeowners. So, Mr. Stedman, get your facts straight. For the record, you can go to Sebastian Property Owners Association on Facebook and watch the ruckus meeting he's talking about because I'm not sure what meeting he was at. Mr. Mayor, please explain to the community what happened to the fill that was supposed to be sold and put back into the trust account. To me, that's criminal. And this board knew exactly what was going on down there because it was in the newspapers that they found the body down there. And you know and I know that those kind of projects don't get approved without the council's approval. So just for the record, if you can just have your city manager break it all down for the community. I sent 17 documents down there to the clerk yesterday. You guys all have copies of the documents. It spells everything out, connect all the dots. This community is owed an explanation. So, by the way, she was talking about around Okeechobee Lake, not in Okeechobee Lake. So let's pay attention, guys. People don't want chemicals sprayed in their canals. And you need to post a sign to, the kids are fishing on the bridge in my community.
Do you have an alternative, sir?
Yeah. Put signs up. If you're going to spray poisons in the canal, put signs up. Tell everybody that you're putting poisons in the canal. That will give everybody warning because we're going to get sued. It's coming down. Everybody, all these other...
So you're in favor of spraying just as long as we put signs up?
No, I'm not. I'm just using your mentality.
So what's your alternative?
Excuse me, let me finish. I'm using your mentality. You're saying it's okay to spray. I'm saying no. I say moratorium now. There's going to be a change very shortly. Either you guys do it and you listen to your people that you represent, or we'll get people up there that will represent us. It's that simple.
Last chance, because your time's got, about 20 seconds. Alternative.
Yeah. I'm going to give it to you. Here we go. Pay attention.
20 seconds.
June 3rd, continuation at the Sebastian Library, 6 o'clock.
Have a nice day.
Now we're going to discuss the alternatives and the solutions because you won't do any...
Thanks, sir.
Excuse me, let me finish.
Your time is up.
You will not do a workshop here in this and our facility.
Your time is up. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're very welcome.
Now, would you let everybody know about the fill?
Thank you, sir.
Would you let everybody know about the fill? Thank you.
Thank you. Just so the public is aware, this council has been for over two months asking for alternatives. And now, apparently, Mr. Gilliams wants to say that he has them and they're going to discuss them in the future. Well, we've been asking for them. We know they don't exist, Mr. Gilliam. But thank you for bringing that to us this evening. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject again.
Please, go ahead.
Whenever Mr. Gilliams left me a message, I always return his call. If he says I didn't return his call, that's a lie. And as far as Okeechobee goes, we check with Glades in Highlands County around Lake Okeechobee, and there is no cancer cluster going on there as well.
Thank you, sir. You're a gentleman for returning his calls because I don't. Anyone else in the public who wishes to speak this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move to new business. At this time, item 12A, approved second amendment to lease agreement. Mr. Carlisle.
Mr. Mayor, this is an agreement with Crown Castle who has a cell tower here on the city property. That lease was set to expire in December of 2025 and they want to extend it to 2045. We negotiated some terms. One of the terms happens to be a $15,000 signing bonus and maintain the fees that we get, which currently is about $36,000. And it's, there's a cost of living or CIP index that goes with that that averages about 4 percent. So we'd ask the city to consider extending this lease agreement with Crown Castle to 2045, December 31st, 2045, and authorize the city manager and the city attorney to sign the appropriate documents.
All right, excellent, counsel. What's your pleasure on item A?
Move approval. Second.
Motion second. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak on item A under new business? All right, seeing none. Any questions from counsel?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Why are they trying to renew it so early?
I don't, they didn't say why they wanted to. They're going through all of their contracts, from what I understand, and renewing them. There's no, there were no reason for us to even look at defaulting it, but I thought it was important that we were able to get the increase in the signing bonus to do it. So we have no intention of having them tear the tower down.
Okay.
But they didn't give any reason why, other than they were going through all their contracts.
All right. I was just curious, but I appreciate the fact that you negotiated a $15,000 sign-on bonus.
Thank you.
Right on. Should have done that for yourself.
No, ma'am. No, sir.
Any questions from counsel? Roll call, please.
Counsel member Avino.
Yes.
Counsel member McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Counsel member Dodd.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Now on to something extremely exciting. Item 12B, resolution R-1913, authorizing the city manager to accept and execute documents relating to the FDOT public transportation grant agreement. Mr. Stokes.
A resolution of the city of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, authorizing acceptance of an amended Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, public transportation grant agreement, PTGA, providing $1 million additional funding for the design and construction of a 16,516-square-foot multipurpose hangar facility at Sebastian Municipal Airport, authorizing the city manager to execute and submit appropriate documents, providing for conflict, providing for scrivener errors, providing for an effective date.
Great. Mr. Carlisle.
Mr. Mayor, I got to give Mr. Baker credit. He's worked guilds only with these organizations and FDOT and FAA to get substantial amount of funding out there for improvements to the airport. So I'm going to let him address this because I think he deserves the credit and the accolades for making this happen.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Mr. Mayor, I share your excitement to receive this grant from the state. In early November, the state extended an $800,000 grant to get this project started. And this is now followed up with an additional $1 million in grant money to complete the construction of the building. And we've put this out to bid as a design-build project and I think it's going to bring good things to the airport and to the city.
Yeah, I think there's no question there. I think it's amazing. We're getting $1.8 million from the state, the FDOT, to build this hangar, which will generate jobs in the area. It's going to just be a continuation of the amazing economic development we've had at our airport. And I appreciate the hard work that you've put into making these things happen. That's critical. And if you just go out there, I mean, you can just go to the golf course and play on hole number eight and look over and see the amazing improvements that have been made to the airport and to see things happening over there. Very excited about the work that you're doing out there. So thank you very much for that. Counsel, what's your pleasure on item B?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak on resolution R-1913? Any questions from counsel? Roll call, please.
Counsel member McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Counsel member Dodd.
Yes.
Counsel member Avino.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, at the last meeting, I explicitly forgot to do this, so I'm going to do it this time. Mr. Stokes, do you have anything to bring us this evening?
No, no, sir, I don't.
All right, see, I didn't forget you and you bring nothing. The last meeting, I forgot you. You had like five things.
I know. With that intro, you caught me off guard.
All right, thank you. Mr. Carlisle.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
No, I just hope everyone comes out for the Memorial Day service at Urban View Park. I know most of the residents do show up for our veteran services. It's a great place to be. Thank you so much for coming.
Yes, and I thank you very much for representing the city there. You will do an amazing job as you always do. Counsel member Dodd.
Yeah, one thing, just before the meeting, the city manager informed me that after a really difficult process, the permits have now been issued for the pickleball courts. So we are going to have pickleball courts this year, as we promised. And there were a lot of issues that came to bear on the permitting process, but they've finally been cleared up. So thank you.
That's great. And tonight, we approve the electricity out there. So that's excellent. Thank you, sir. Counsel member Avino.
No, sir.
Mr. McPartlin.
No, sir.
I beg your pardon. Counsel member? Still no? And I have nothing further this evening. Being no further business, we are adjourned.